Good morning, council. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Tuesday, April 6th. Hope everyone is well. First order is adoption of our minutes, please. Has everyone read them and satisfied that they're all right? Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Jones. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Next is adoption. No, I remind everyone to disclose your pecuniary interest and then general nature thereof. Not seen any, so. Next, we have presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. Development charges background study. And if our guests are ready, they have the floor. And welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I'm, I hope people can hear me. Yes, there's a few nodding heads there. That's great. Thank you very much. And well, thank you for, for giving me the time this morning. Today's going to give us an opportunity to review the draft development charge rates that we've calculated and explore the, the main inputs into those rates, particularly on the forecast side, as well as the, the capital works that, that form part of the basis of the calculations. You'll remember that we spoke about the development charge legislation and the development charge background study process back in January, so I don't intend to spend too much time, but I do have a few sort of refresher slides at the beginning of this presentation, which I'll quickly skip through. And at the end of this presentation, we have for you a resolution that we'd, we'd ask you to consider that will direct us to prepare a formal background study on the basis of the capital works that are set out in this presentation. So we'll go through those works in some detail as we move forward. So next slide, please. You'll remember from the January presentation that there's a, there's a prescribed methodology that we have to follow in calculating development charges. So we have to look at the amount, the type and location of development that's going to occur into the future. We have to look at the level of service you've been providing in the past. That sets a cap or a limit on how much you can fund moving forward. We have to identify the works that you're planning to construct that will provide services or expand existing services for growth and development. And, and as I say, we'll go through those works in some detail in this presentation. I'll then show you the draft rates that have been calculated and see how those compare to what were calculated five years ago for you. And with some of the rates that, that are in place in similar jurisdictions or surrounding jurisdictions. And then we can talk about next steps. So again, just a reminder, we're talking about fees that are imposed on development to pay for development-related or growth-related capital costs. The principle being that this tool is given to municipalities by the province to allow development to pay for itself, the costs that are required in order to expand services for itself. The development charge legislation, if we go to the next slide, please, requires municipalities to undertake a background study before they impose development charges. And there's a public process that's required as well. And the charges are imposed by bylaw and the bylaws have five-year terms. The charges can either be imposed across the county as a whole or in specific geographic areas. And I'll speak a little bit more about that. I know we had some questions about that back in January. So it's, want to circle back on, on some of those questions. And then to the extent that you'll be setting these up for the first time, there are some administrative changes that are required. Each service for which a charge is imposed has to have its own development charge reserve fund. And I'll speak a little bit more about the collection process, which is done by the, the local municipalities. And I know there were some questions about that as well, and we've, we've tried to address those in this presentation. Next slide, then. There are only certain services for which development charges can be imposed. And this is the full list under the Development Charges Act. But we've only calculated a charge for the services that the county provides, obviously. But also for the services for which there are growth-related capital costs. So those are the ones that are shown with an asterisk here. Services related to a highway, which is essentially roads and related infrastructure that falls within a roadway. Your land ambulance services, library services, long-term care. Provincial offenses act services. And there's one other service, which is, is called development-related studies. And that would be your land use planning studies. So then on the forecast side, I just want to spend a little bit of time here. We haven't got the sort of the historic growth going back several decades before 2011, but we've certainly looked at it. And as you know, I mean, growth was fairly steady through the county throughout the 1990s and the 2000s. Although 2008, 2009, when the recession had hit, hit this part of the world pretty hard, certainly St. Thomas. And the county as a whole got hit quite hard and it took several years to recover from that. Predominantly on the job growth side of, of things. However, and you can see this in the line graph on screen, since the 2016 census, there has been a real run-up in both population and housing growth. And so, for example, in, in Southold, they're now receiving around about 30 new housing units a year. Central Elgin was doing about 120 units a year and then in 2019 clocked 140 new housing units. And in 2020, 170 new housing units. So literally in Central Elgin, probably the most rapid growth that we've seen in the last couple of decades. And this is not actually too unusual. We've seen this kind of growth pressure in other areas at the fringe of the Greater Golden Horseshoe, which has its center in the, in the Greater Toronto area, as you know. And so we're doing work in Gray County. And what we've also seen in Oxford County is this kind of pressure existing before COVID. And it seems to have accelerated during the pandemic period. And that's possibly a reflection of a spate of early retirees from the major urban centers. It could also be a reflection of people who've now realized that they can work in locations that are a bit further afield from their offices. And in any case, for the development charge purposes, we have assumed that this higher rate of growth is going to continue somewhat, maybe not at quite the level we've seen right now, but certainly through the period to 2031, which is the time period which we, which we've calculated the development charges on. And so you can see the, the sort of the, the steeper line from 2016 sort of continues on to 2031. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see the numbers associated with this. So it represents around 200 housing units a year between now and 2031. And population growth of around 4,500 people, taking the current population of 52,400 to just under 57,000 by 2031. And the population associated with the new housing, that would be the people living in those new housing, would be around 6,400 people. And on the job side, it would be a similar story, about 1,200 jobs per year between now and 2031, bringing the county job total to just over 16,800 by 2031. And that, that would be associated with just over 91,000 square meters of new non-residential building floor space. I mentioned in January that council must consider the use of area-specific charges. And I should say that the vast majority of area-specific charges that exist in Ontario are for, are associated with development in greenfield areas, undeveloped areas. And they're also associated with three services, water, wastewater and stormwater, all of which are provided at the local level in Elgin. Area-specific charges are rarely, if ever, used for the kind of services that the county provides, roads, libraries, ambulance services. And the reason is, is twofold, really. First of all, all residents in the county have access to the road network, to the ambulance services, to the library facilities, et cetera. And it's very difficult to define on a map, the benefiting area of these works. So with a water pipe into a field, you can draw a line on the map to say everyone within this catchment area will, will be able to tap into the water pipe. With a road, it's much more difficult because the origins and destinations of traffic are all over the place. The road itself is part of a larger network. And so it's very difficult to draw that benefiting area in the same way, which is, which is why for these kinds of county services, it's practically unheard of to have area-specific charges. And on that basis, we would recommend that council adopt a county-wide approach for all of the services. I mentioned that a lot of our work is spent on determining historical service levels for each of the services for which we've calculated a charge. Your historic level of service sets a cap or a limit on what we can fund moving forward. And it's a function of really the assets that you've had, had, the value of those assets and the number of people and jobs that have existed over the last 10 years in the county. The next slide sets out what the limits are for each of the services. So for a library, we can, under this background study, calculate a charge that would recover $826,000 worth of capital costs, growth-related capital costs, but no more than that. And it's just over half a million for land ambulance, 4.7 or 4.8 million for long-term care, just under 150,000 for provincial offenses. And then for roads, it's, you know, 86 and a half million dollars, which I can assure you, we're not even going to come close to, to achieving. So. If we go to the next slide, then. Just now, I want to spend some time going through the capital works that form the basis for the charges. Excuse me. Thank you. The legislation, you'll remember, requires that the capital program in the background study be a reflection of council's intentions to provide services in the future. And so we have spent a lot of time speaking with staff with each of the services to ensure that the capital works reflect the works that are set out in your pre-existing capital forecasts and other financial documents. And you'll remember that the legislation requires us to adjust the costs of all of these projects to account for any external funding you're going to be receiving. The extent to which the cost of these projects is going to be benefiting the existing community, the existing residents, because those costs cannot be included in the charge. And the extent to which some of the costs of, of some of these works are going to benefit growth and development beyond our time horizon of, that extends to 2031, the so-called post-period benefits. So the first service that we'll look at is the growth-related studies. And so you'll see a lot of these tables in the slides to come. And so just go, going through from left to right, you'll see a list of the projects that we are considering in the first column and then the total cost of those works. The grants and subsidies that we know or we can reasonably expect to receive to pay for some of those costs. In the fourth column, that portion of the costs that will benefit your existing community, the BTE share. Then the fifth column, the costs that are eligible for development charge recovery between 2021 and 2031. And then in the final column, the so-called post-period benefits. They're still growth-related, but they're not eligible for DC funding at this particular time. And so for this particular service, the growth-related studies, we have the development charge studies, which are development charge eligible. We have a portion of the costs of your ongoing official plan review work. And a provision for other growth-related studies. Those could be agricultural studies, environmental studies, secondary plans or, or similar land use planning studies. So a total cost of all of these studies of 715,000 and bringing into the development charge calculation only 527,500 dollars of that total. Next slide, please. Yeah, library services, then. So for library services, you'll remember, if you look at the, the number underneath the table here, we have a funding envelope for library services of 826,000 dollars. We cannot calculate a charge that exceeds that cost. And if we look in the fifth column, the DC recovery column, you can see we've made a provision for the ongoing expansion of collection materials to allow you to maintain your level of service to accommodate the new growth to 2031. That's around 60,000 dollars a year in collection materials purchases, as well as a provision to expand or otherwise improve the Almer facility of 135,000 dollars. So a total of 802,000 dollars included in the charge, which is just under the funding envelope. Next slide, please, is, so this is the land ambulance service. We have a, a funding envelope down at the bottom there of 519,000 dollars. We have two projects included in the program. One is a provision to add an additional ambulance to the, to the ambulance fleet. That will in part, I believe, allow you to move to 24-hour service in, in one or more of the facilities. And the cost of a new ambulance is 181,000 dollars. So of the 400,000 dollars that's in the capital program, most of that is, you know, replacement of existing vehicles, but the 181 represents a new vehicle to the fleet. And then we've also made a provision for a master plan for, for the service as well at 75,000 dollars. You'll note also in this service that there is no provision for the expansion of any of the facilities over the next 11 years. So bringing into the charge 256,000 dollars, around about half of the funding envelope. On the long-term care side of things, we have a large funding envelope of 4.8 million dollars. You have three facilities in the county, although work is only currently contemplated to improve one of them, the Terrace Lodge facility. And it's a 2.4 million dollar project that is being anticipated for this, this construction of this facility or reconstruction, I should say. And we are only bringing into the charge a very small portion of that total, 481,000 dollars. And the reason for that is that although it's a 40,000, 40,000 square foot expansion to the facility, there will actually be no additional capacity by way of beds created through the work. And so it's, it's our position that the growth-related share of this, given, given the capacity of the facility is not actually increasing, the growth-related share of this is, can only really be justified on a very small scale. Nevertheless, there are some public space improvements taking place. So there'll be more program areas. There'll be more space available to rent for onsite public and, and private businesses. And there, this facility does provide services that extend beyond the actual residents of the, of the building. So there are Alzheimer's groups and Meals on Wheels and stroke day programs that, that occur at this facility too. So that put together, we feel that there's a, there's a small percentage of the total costs that are being, can, can be included justify, just justifiably in, in the development charge. And that would be around 40, 481,000 dollars, 10% of the total cost. Provincial offenses, then. Here, what's happened is in the last or a couple of years ago, as you know, a significant expansion of the space in which provincial offenses services are provided was expanded. And there is a mechanism under the Act to recoup a portion of that previous investment to acknowledge that growth over the next 11 years will in part benefit from that expansion. And so we've, we have included a portion of those costs that were incurred by the county in the development charge. And we're recovering a portion of that through this calculation moving forward. And that portion amounts to around 147,000 dollars, which is in fact the, the funding envelope, the maximum permissible charge. The biggest component of the charge that's been calculated relates to the roads and related works. And so we've put a full list of the works here. I don't propose to go through each one, but we've sort of categorized them into three groups. So this group here shows you the works, the need for which is really being driven by repair needs and replacement needs. But as part of those works, the capacity of these, of this infrastructure will be increased to accommodate, for example, in the case of the Meeks Bridge replacement, additional traffic by the addition, by the creation of an additional lane on that bridge as it's replaced. And in the, and in the case of the Port Beau Will Storm Sewer, the creation of additional capacity in the sewer as it's replaced in phases over the next 11 years. But altogether, we feel that the, the components of, the growth-related components of, of these works is probably pretty small, about 25% of the total cost. Then we have a, a group of works that, where the need for the service is being driven by growth and development or the, the traffic arising from development that's occurring at specific locations. But there are sort of ancillary benefits that will spill over to your existing residents. And so the, the growth-related share of the cost of these projects is anywhere between 50 and 90% of the total cost. And then finally, in the, the last two pages, if we can go to the next slide, please. We have a list of projects where, in looking at the, at the background studies that are justifying these projects, these projects are entirely related to providing infrastructure or improving infrastructure in order to meet the immediate needs of development close by. So that could be additional turning lanes on the road network. It could be new signal, new signals or improvements or intersections to accommodate additional traffic flow coming in and out of new subdivisions, for example. So these are the locations here on the left. And we've included the full cost, 100% of the, of the cost of these projects as growth-related projects. And that can be seen on this slide and the following slide as well. And so just on the total line there at the bottom, you'll see that we have a total growth-related capital program of just over 10 million dollars. And we're bringing about 6.7 million dollars of that into the development charge calculation. So these are the rates on the right-hand column of the, of the table there. So the, the rate for a single and semi-detached unit that's been calculated is just over 4,000 dollars a unit. And there are smaller charges for the smaller unit types that accommodate fewer people. So it's 2,600 dollars for a townhouse or other kind of multiple dwelling. And then just over 2,100 dollars for an apartment unit. And those are slightly lower than the charges that were calculated five years ago in, when we did this exercise. But like five years ago, the, the charge is overwhelmingly related to the roads and related service. Although, you know, the other services are not inconsequential, they, they make up around 28% of the total charge. And then on the next slide, you'll see the charge that's been calculated for non-residential development, your commercial, industrial, institutional types of development. And here we have the, the reverse. We have a maximum charge that could be imposed of just over 15 dollars a square meter, which represents an increase on what was calculated five years ago of 8.41 cents a square meter. And the question, of course, is why the shift? Why, why is the residential charge coming down a little bit? Why is the non-residential charge going up? It's higher because of the slight shift in the development forecast. And so last, you know, five years ago, we were still sort of coming out of the recession and the jobs outlook was a little bleaker, shall we say? Whereas things looking a little more balanced moving forward and more positive on the jobs front. That's shifted, shifted how we've done the allocation of costs between the residential and the non-residential sector. And remember too, that the non-residential sector benefits heavily from the roads program as well. So these are a repeat then of the slides that I showed you in January. So what you'll see here is what the developer pays when they go and collect their building permit at the counter of the lower-tier municipality. And so they will pay an upper-tier charge, which is shown in green. They will pay a lower-tier charge, which is shown in the gold. And then in some areas, they will also pay an area-specific charge for water and sewer services, which is shown in red. And so also probably should just point out that the charges that you see here are the charges that are actually in force. They're not necessarily the maximum charges that each municipality could impose. But we have, for, for our purposes, we've, we've put in the maximum charge that's been calculated, obviously. And so you'll see here that, you know, the Elgin County charges in the various places, there, they'll be slightly higher in places like Central Elgin, Malahide and Elmer, which already have a development charge at, at the lower tier. But even with those charges, you know, you're still sort of in the middle part of the range of the charges here and, and certainly nowhere near the, the faster growing urban areas of London and Branford and, and Strathroy, Carradoc, which essentially is, is you know, well within the, the real estate market sphere of London, shall we say. And then the calculated charges for Bayham, West Elgin and some of the other places in the county which don't have development charges would in the county which don't have development charges would be at the low end of the scale That's the charge for the residential units. And if we look at the comparison for the commercial developers, again, the highest charge that would be imposed in Elgin County would be in Central Elgin, which would be a sixty-nine dollar per square meter charge, well below the kind of charges we see in London, Thames Centre, and Norfolk, for example, but certainly much higher than some of the charges we're seeing in Oxford County, in Chatham Kent, and in places in Elgin County which don't actually impose a non-residential charge at all, like Elmer, and Bayham, and West Elgin, et cetera. And on the industrial side, it's slightly different. A lot of municipalities, certainly in this part of the world, although they have a commercial charge, they don't impose a charge on industrial development, predominantly as an economic development incentive. And so again, you'll see in many of the Oxford County jurisdictions, they don't have a charge at all. So introducing a charge in Elgin County would introduce a fifteen-dollar-per-square-meter charge on industrial development that doesn't exist in other places. But again, certainly wouldn't be anything close like what we see in St. Thomas, Branford, Strathroy, or London. And we've also shown you comparisons of here on the next three slides of simply the county charges. So these are charges just imposed by the upper tier, just to give you a sense of, a bit more of a like-for-like, assuming that, you know, counties have similar services, which they don't in all cases. So for example, in Oxford County, Oxford imposes the water and sewer charge in Ingersoll. So we've highlighted that difference, the fact that the county charge includes services there that are not provided in some of the other county jurisdictions. So Simcoe and Peterborough, they have quite significant charges approaching ten thousand dollars a single or semi-detached unit. Middlesex does not currently have a charge, but Elgin County would certainly be very competitive when we looked at the straight county charges, it would be towards the lower end of the scale, similar to what we're seeing in Dufferin County right now. And on the non-residential side, it's a similar story. Simcoe, Oxford County lead the way, Wellington as well. Elgin, were you to impose the full fifteen-dollar-per-square-meter charge, would put you squarely in the middle of the range of charges you see here. And on the industrial side, a similar story to the extent that many of the county jurisdictions do not impose the charge for industrial developers. Simcoe, Wellington, Dufferin would be the exceptions there. So, I mean, I perhaps should have mentioned this earlier, but I mean, if it's not clear, then the charges that have been calculated and I'm showing here are the maximum permissible charges that you could impose under the Act. You are of course under no obligation to impose the maximum charge, you can impose whatever you want, as long as it doesn't exceed that amount. I just want to touch very briefly on, we committed to sort of examining the administrative burden that might arise at the local level if the county was going to pursue development charges this time round. And I should say, this is somewhat tricky to do. But just a reminder that development charges that are imposed by the county are collected by the lower tiers, and then the money is remitted monthly to the county treasurer. And there's been some recent amendments to the legislation that requires that the development charge that's payable by a developer be frozen at the time that they secure their site plan or rezoning approval. And so it's frozen for two years. So there's a bit of a calculation that's now required by what charge any one landowner pays, and you've got to look back and see when they got their site plan or rezoning approval, which has complicated things a little bit. And there's also a payment plan that's required for rental, housing, institutional development, and nonprofit housing. So they don't pay all at once upfront, they pay in five-year, well, one-year installments for five years for the rentals and institutionals, and then it's one-year installments for twenty years for the nonprofit housing. So there's a fair amount of tracking of payments that has to occur for those kinds of very specific developments. But I guess the bottom line from our perspective is that, you know, Elmer, Malahide, Central Elgin, they already have development charges, so they already have the administrative mechanics set up. And so it's really about the volume of transactions that they would be dealing with when we look at the burden of administrative, the administrative burden they would be dealing with. And so it was just trying to sort of figure out what that volume might be. And if you look at the table here, what I've done is try to sort of tease out how many units per month each one of these municipalities might be dealing with, how many permits for new units, and associated development charge payments. So Central Elgin is obviously dealing with the biggest amount of volume, and we estimate that that would probably be around five to ten permits for new units that they deal with on any given month. And the remaining municipalities on any given month is anywhere between one and five permits for new units per month. And so that would be the equivalent number of development charge transactions. And again, I don't know the resources that the local municipalities have on hand, but as I say, I mean, Elmer, Malahide, and Central Elgin already have these processes set up. And so dealing with additional payments for the county of anywhere between five and ten or one to ten permits per month doesn't strike me as particularly administratively burdensome. But I obviously wouldn't want to speak for departments if they are under pressure at the moment, then certainly this isn't going to assist with that. But at face value, from my perspective, layering in a county charge, certainly where development charges are in place right now, my view is that this is not particularly administratively burdensome. So as I say, this is a rather tricky question to address, but I'm happy to sort of address any further questions you have about it, and I hope we've sort of done it a little bit of justice. The next slide then, just in terms of next steps. I'll deal with the first point last, but why don't we work backwards from the bottom? And so our aim with this study is to bring rates for council in June of this year. And we can at the same time during that meeting, present to you the results of the background study and various options for implementing a charge. You can of course exempt or discount certain types of development, you can phase charges in, and you can of course implement a charge that is less than the maximum calculated. Excuse me. There is a public process that's required, and we propose to hold a public meeting in May. And prior to that public meeting, a draft version of a bylaw will have to be released. And so provided we get your direction this evening, we will begin drafting a version of that bylaw immediately, and to ensure that it's available before the public meeting. And sixty days before the bylaw is passed, the background study has to be released. And so if you intend on actually passing a bylaw in June, we need to get the background study completed up on the website, available for public scrutiny by the end of this month. And so with that in mind, we have put forward for you this morning, a resolution for you to consider that would direct us to prepare a development charge background study pursuant to Section 10 of the Development Charges Act, based on the growth-related capital program, the capital works that have been presented to you today. And so I'm going to stop there, and I'm of course happy to answer any questions Mr. Warden or any of the councillors may have. Thank you.
All right, Stephen, thank you very much for the presentation. I see some hands going up. Councillor Jones, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Stephen, a couple of things. With regards to land ambulance, obviously it's a shared service that we offer our services, we manage it, and we serve St. Thomas as well. Are you able to separate the cost between St. Thomas and Elgin County out of that equation? And the other thing, Southold enacted our DC charges bylaw back in December, so you need to update that, some of those slides, Southold does have DCs now.
Well, through you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Councillor Jones. I didn't know that about Southold, but we'll certainly cycle back and make those changes for sure. And as far as the land ambulance goes, my understanding is that the costs of providing the service are shared with St. Thomas. And so to the extent that they are shared in the historic service-level calculations, we've accounted for that cost sharing. But my understanding is that for capital works moving forward, and certainly for growth-related capital, it's the county that bears responsibility for the capital purchases. And so until we hear otherwise about cost sharing of the new ambulance or the master plan, we've assumed that the county will bear the full cost of those works.
Thank you, Stephen. Deputy Warden Mennel, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to speak in favor of the development charges and going forward. Malahide has had development charges for a number of years, and certainly I've always been a proponent that growth should pay for growth. It certainly has been easier on our taxpayers, have been paying taxes all their life. If you can dip into the development charges and build a new road, or build a new building, or what have you, it makes it a lot easier. And so certainly I'm in favor, and I hope that council supports this this afternoon.
Thank you for that. Further questions? Councillor Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Stephen, when you're looking at your stuff, I noticed you left that and done with out when you were calculating the workloads and whatnot. Plus, we do have a specific development charge for sewage, which you missed when you were doing that. So if you want to circle back to that and done with a bit, that would help too. And it would also probably slightly change the number of permits per month.
It's still noted. Do you have any further questions?
Mr. Warden, Sally?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak in favor of this. This is important, I agree with you, the growth should pay for growth, and I mean, it's absolutely vital in Central Elgin, we've had development charges for many years, and we've just redone them, and they had to go down because of course, we don't have as many costs coming up in the next five years, so we had to lower our development charges. But when you look at the roads, we have a lot of roads in Central Elgin that are going to need improvements. And if development charges aren't charged, then all of your municipalities will be paying for those. And if development charges are done, then the developers will be the ones that are paying for those improvements. Thank you.
Councillor McPhail.
I'm okay right now, Mr. Warden. Move on to someone else.
All right. Deputy Warden Mennel.
Just an additional comment, Mr. Warden. We've already been given a heads-up by our MPP, Jeff Urick. In last week in the paper, it stated that municipalities have to look after themselves going forward, and this is one of the tools where, that they've given us to look after ourselves. So I think we should pay attention to that.
Thank you. Further comments? Not seeing any. Councillor McPhail.
Yes, Mr. Warden, I think this question is more for Julie than our guest here. Julie, have you had the conversation with the CEOs that are not currently involved with development charges? And has there been any discussions regarding how that is going to work with the lower-tier municipalities doing the accounting for the county?
Not at this point, though I did have a preliminary conversation with Jim that that is a logical next step. First, we wanted to gauge whether there's any interest from council in proceeding with this. But you're absolutely right, that plays a critical role in next steps.
Councillor Ketchum.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Like Councillor McPhail, I do have some reservations on the whole concept of development charges, particularly for those of us who do not currently levy those. And though I understand the comments from the presentation that it doesn't appear to be onerous, I'm not convinced. I think when you start into tracking a twenty-five-year time horizon on certain of these payments, then you don't currently have the system in place, then there is some accounting skills required. And it seems to me that there's a fundamental question that I had asked back in January that still remains out there, is that is there any mechanism to compensate those municipalities who do not currently levy development charges, to compensate those of us who don't want to do it and are forced into it?
Who would like to try to answer that?
Well, through you, Mr. Warden, I can just say that from a legislative and practical perspective, there is no impediment to, you know, recovering the cost of a service that's provided by a lower tier to an upper tier. And I do know of certain circumstances, not in the development charges context, where, you know, there are agreements between upper tiers and lower tiers about, you know, fee collection processes and recovering the costs of administering fees and charges, particularly on sort of the engineering side of things. So I don't think there's anything that prevents that sort of agreement from being put into
Further comments? Councillor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You know, as this is a potential new revenue stream for the county, you know, in your experience, Stephen, can you give me any examples of, because the new revenue stream is coming, any offsetting tax reductions to the general property tax that might be a result of this exercise? Or is this just found money that is spent within the county?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We haven't done a sort of a full fiscal impact analysis of what might happen to tax rates moving forward. I believe in January I addressed the amount of revenue that was calculated back in 2015 over the five-year period, and I believe it was something like four hundred thousand dollars. So we'll certainly be looking at that again as we prepare the background study. But certainly I wouldn't want to sort of say that that represented a X amount of savings on the tax rate without looking at it in a little bit more detail. And that's certainly not a requirement of the background study to do that kind of analysis.
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, thank you. I'm I'm not convinced that this is something I would like to see for the county, but on the other hand, I guess we have to be open-minded. And we have to keep in mind that there's there's ways we can approach this. And one is the phase-in option. Elmer used that, and it worked well. I'm not keen on just jumping right in with both feet, but if we could do a phase-in possibly, I think it's more palatable. And certainly, we can set the rates as been suggested. We don't have to go with the top amount. So, I mean, we have to keep that in our mind. And I believe these development charges, it's a five-year, like, can be reviewed. So most certainly, we could look at something and then maybe in five years go, you know, even in further with what we want to do. But I'm a bit hesitant about it, but I do I do believe that the phase-in is one option we need to look at for sure.
Councillor Jones. Councillor Jones, then.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, Southold done the same. We did a phased-in approach and just get the developers that are already in Southold accustomed to where we're headed. And there's been no, obviously, there's some grumbling, but life goes on and they're still building houses and they're still buying land, and the DCs have not slowed them down whatsoever.
Councillor Martin.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing that Councillor Jones said. Even though Central Elgin had development charges for a long time, it has not slowed growth. In fact, growth, as you saw from his report, is rapidly increasing in Central Elgin, and development charges haven't inhibited our development.
An observation from myself, I know on north of here on Wellington Road, the Linhurst on both Southold and Central Elgin, there's been tremendous growth there. And I know, I asked Mr. Lima, but I believe there's been chat, a need for a traffic light out there in the future. And that's been spurred on by by growth. If we'd had the development charges, my understanding is that that would have contributed. So we've kind of missed the boat on that. Is that correct, Mr. Lima?
You are correct, Mr. Warden, yes.
So I guess that's what caught my attention, because we, in some areas, we're seeing rapid growth. That that brings expenses. Further comments? Councillor McPhail.
I'm just I'm just wondering, when you take a look at the development charges from a county level and speaking for West Elgin, we're really not knocked off our feet with new development in West Elgin, simply because of the our geography more than anything. So to to tie us together with the same $4,000 some odd dollars development charge in West Elgin, where we're we're trying to get development of any kind, certainly is a disincentive as compared to Southold or Central Elgin, where they're under, you know, certainly under development pressure. So is that is that something by supporting this, that I'm I'm putting up another roadblock to development in West Elgin because I'm adding another $4,000 to the price? Or has there ever been any consideration given to a graduating scale of of these costs in different jurisdictions that are under different development pressure across the county?
Who'd care to answer that? Try to.
Well, through you, Mr. Warden. Just to be clear, that all of the costs that have been included in the rate calculations have been assumed to benefit, to have a broad benefit across the county, regardless of where the investment is made. But the county does have the option of imposing the charge only in certain locations. I should point out, though, that if, for example, it was going to impose the charge in some municipalities but not in places like West Elgin, then it would be the taxpayers across the county as a whole who would be making up the difference. You can't increase the charge, for example, for developers in Central Elgin in order to offset the exemption that you provide for developers in West Elgin.
All right. Further comments? Councillor Purcell.
Mr. Warden, just, I'm probably, like several of the members of council, pretty reluctant to go ahead immediately with the broad brush of just doing it. Can we make it conditional upon having the options of phase-in so that can be laid in front of us? And we can fully understand that. And perhaps three options on amount, so that there's a low tier, a middle tier, and we've already got the high one, just so that we have those kinds of options to consider. Because as Don pointed out, as you get out into the hinterlands, it has a much larger impact, also has a larger impact on administration because of the limited number of people that we have. You only have to look at London. London charges a ridiculous amount for development charges, but that market will bear that, and and they can get away with it. Central Elgin and Southold, their market might bear it, but when you start moving out to the outer edges, our markets can't bear it with the same sort of resiliency. And we're just starting to enjoy a little growth that we don't see except every 20, 25 years. And we'd hate to see that curtailed in any way. So if we can make it conditional upon a much more flexible approach being brought back to us, that way Stephen knows what he's trying to deliver to us too. So we've given him some marching orders when he comes back, he can bring back the options.
I'm looking to Julie. Can we do that? She's nodding her head yes. So we're going to modify the resolution? Are you ready to read it? Soon? Give her a second.
Be it resolved that Hemson Consulting be directed to prepare a development charge background study pursuant to section 10 of the Development Charges Act 1997, based on the growth-related capital program, including a phased approach to implementation and associated costs, and that staff be directed to discuss development charges and mechanisms to compensate municipalities for administration and report back to council.
Is that clear with everyone? If it is, I'll entertain a mover and seconder.
So move, Mr. Warden.
Deputy Ward, and Purcell has his hand up. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Giger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. All right, Stephen, a good discussion, good presentation. Thank you. Have a good day. Appreciate it. We're at the point of committee of the whole. Entertain a motion to go into committee of the whole, please. Move by Jones and French. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Giger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
All right. Our first report looks like it's from me, Warden's Activity Report for March and a COVID-19 update. I know you've all had it and read it, and I'll be happy to entertain or try and answer any questions. I certainly, some days have been very, very busy. Former wardens will understand those days. I would have to thank Carolyn, Catherine, and Julie for all the help to get, give me and making sure I'm going the right direction, feet on time. It's appreciated. But certainly, any questions from council? If not, entertain a motion to receive. That's Purcell and Ketchba.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Giger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up, we've got manager of planning review of environmental impact studies. Good morning, Nancy. Welcome.
Good morning, Warden, and through you two members of council. This report details the requirement for environmental impact studies, or EISs as it's also known as, based on development applications. At this time, the county no longer has a mechanism in place to review these EIS reports. The previous agreement, which consisted of three consultants who would provide peer reviews of the EISs, has now expired. As per the provision, the previous sorry council reports and direction on this matter, there is the potential to explore the four conservation authorities, providing a review function for EISs, which they do currently provide some review function, depending on if it falls within their core mandate or not. The need to ensure that the review of EISs can be provided in a timely and cost-efficient manner is very important, while also balancing local knowledge and availability. The preliminary information and responses from other counties on their approach was provided as background only, and further research and discussions with other counties on their approach can be done if council wishes to explore other options such as in-house services or contracting external third-party firms. This report is hoping to get some guidance on how to proceed with the review of EISs at the county. The recommendation is based on the previous council recommendation, but additional options can also be explored. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Nancy. Open the question, open the floor for questions. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it's a it's a good pathway to go down and at least see if the conservation authorities are willing to do it. They're already doing it partially, and when we go to consultants, we're padding their pockets pretty good for the costs of those. And with the conservation authorities' cost recovery, I think it should be a cost savings to the county in the long run.
Thank you. Councillor Giger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I'm wondering if we could look at this just as we do other requests for service providers. And typically, I think council provided with options so that, you know, we don't make assumptions about the cost of consultants or, like, I certainly would like the report to be about comparing costs of various options from in-house to third-party to conservation authorities being just one of the possible providers. Because I'm really, when you step back and read between the lines of the report, we're looking at a service provider, approaching a service provider who doesn't necessarily have skills and will do some of the work, may not have capacity, and and we don't, so and it's not for business. So we wouldn't do that with any other service providers. And so I thought we should step back and approach it as any other support providers.
Thank you. Councillor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess this question's for Nancy. If we were to go down the route of having four, four different conservation authorities adjudicating these environmental studies, what what is going to be the continuity that each one of the conservation authorities looks at an issue through the same lens? And we don't have four different ideas and try to balance that across our areas that something it's okay in one area isn't okay somewhere else?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I, that's a great question and something that we'll need to, obviously, if we were to go with that sort of an option with the four CAs, being able to review them, we would need to hammer down sort of that memorandum of understanding or that agreement that we would come up with, what I think detail that sort of review function as well, and and what's expected from all of the CAs in terms of their responses. I think that would be obviously necessary in order to ensure that it's a level, level review playing field.
Councillor Purcell, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Warden, probably through you. But is it mandatory to do a peer review? And if it is, then I support what Grant is saying, because I realize that it's one of the many steps that delay our ability to get going on projects and that, which is sounds like a broken record for me. So if it's necessary, I agree with what Dominique's saying, but I think you're already planning on doing that, doing a thorough investigation that it can deliver. And if we can deliver, quote, in-house with somebody that's already being paid by the taxpayers, that's much preferential to going out to consultants.
Through you, Mr. Warden. It's not mandatory to do a peer review, but certainly EISs are required as per the official plan. And as I said, right now, we don't have any expertise, so any reports that are coming in are just being reviewed from from my perspective, on my planning background. And I know a bit about environmental studies, but certainly, if challenged, I don't have the expertise to be able to push back on anything, for instance. So that's the that's the biggest problem, is that gap in knowledge.
Councillor Purcell.
Yeah, just just to follow up, I I appreciate your candor on that, and we'll give you the tools you need. But I also, anybody that does an environmental assessment, whether they do it for a developer and pay for them or not, they have a legal obligation to do it properly the first time, and if they don't. So I always worry about us having checkers checking the checkers and not holding the bad guys responsible and tying up all the good guys, because you might have 3% of them that aren't that ethical. Well, let's go nail the 3%, not the 97% that could flow rate through. Just just a comment, but I I support giving you a tools that you think you need.
Further comments? Councillor Giger.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a follow-up to clarify, any kind of MOU with the CAs would fall fee for service.
You're breaking up, Dominique.
Yeah. I apologize, bad connection day. I just want to clarify, there would be a fee, even if we go with the CAs, there would be a fee for, correct?
Nancy's saying yes.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, there would be a fee. The question is what that that fee would look like based on the CAs and also based on the other types of options we have, such as in-house or consulting, consulting firms reviewing.
Paying for a service, it is a diligence to cover who can provide the best service and best cost in the most efficient way and who has the expertise and not just look at one provider.
Did everyone catch that?
Only half of it.
I'll try to.
Want to try again? Yeah. I know it's not your fault.
Sure. My point is that because we would be paying for a fee, we would, our diligence is to compare then who is the best, who can provide the best service at the most cost-efficient timeliness with best expertise. That's what we would do for any other service provider. So I I would move that staff back to recommend that pairs multiple options.
Who else? I think Ed, you had your hand up.
Exactly, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much. My interpretation of the report and the recommendation is that this is the the beginning of the investigation. You haven't come back with the, the recommended action yet. I agree with what Counselors Shiger is saying, that I'd like to see the entire mix from a cost comparative as well as an availability. We've, you know, as indicated in the report, we had three environmental experts, firms providing those comments in the past. I'm thinking that it may be a little much for us to have an expectation of bringing this in-house, but if we can have a little more detail, we don't even know if the, the current, you know, the current CAs have the necessary biologists on staff to perform the role. So I think there's a, a lack of information to make a solid decision today, but there's nothing wrong with authorizing an investigation.
I can concur with that. We may find out the conservations do not have the expertise and they have, they're going out. So probably the discussion with them first and do we have a consensus that we'll do further investigation? Seeing a lot of heads nod. I think we have a, Dominique did move. If we have a second or we can, Bob, you're seconding or want to speak? Okay, so it's been moved by Shiger and Purcell. Do you want to try and read it to work clear, Julie?
I'll be it resolved that staff be directed to provide a follow-up report that details options associated with the provision of EIS study reviews and associated fees for each of those options.
If everyone's happy with that, we'll call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have Director of Engineering Services, Pot Mix Asphalt Paving. Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. As part of the 2021 capital budget, tenders were advertised and issued to complete asphalt, road paving and surface treatment on nine separate road projects. Local Paving Incorporated, Dunn Corp Enterprises Incorporated submitted the lowest compliant bids as detailed before you in the report. I would note one minor error with respect to the detailed budget forecast summary associated with the surface treatment and granular shouldering as detailed on page three of the report. It showcases a deficit of $16,333.95 when instead that actually represents a surplus, not a, not a deficit. All of Elgin's local municipal partners were once again invited to participate in the county's tender. Three municipalities elected to participate in the surface treatment tender only. The recommendations are before you, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Another sign spring is here. Do we have a mover, a second or further motion? By Ketchba, second by Jones. No further discussion, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're still up. County road maintenance expenditures, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council once again. This report summarizes county road maintenance expenditures as reported by Elgin's member municipalities for the, for 2020 in accordance with our road maintenance agreement. The recommendation is to receive and file, happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Brian? Mover and seconder, please.
Still moved.
Deputy Warden Mennel and Counselor McPhail, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Good morning.
Can I request a two-minute comfort break?
I think we can accommodate that. We'll recess for a couple, three minutes. All right, I call the meeting back to order. And I think, good morning, Steve, you're up.
Warden, through you to council, you have before you a report which amounts to a follow-up to direction received on March 23rd to continue negotiations for a commercial lease with Mervyn Riddell regarding existing office space in the Eldon County Administration Building. CEO and I met with Mr. Riddell that led to really a consensus relating to all terms and conditions. It is significant to note that the consensus included the acknowledgement and direction regarding potential interference with the elevator project in return for which the 60-day termination clause at the option of the tenant existing in the current lease arrangement was continued. Draft lease was prepared in accordance with the normal protocols and format, including rent calculations and the special clauses regarding the elevator regarding quiet enjoyment and the 60-day termination clause. Mr. Riddell has agreed to that lease form and in fact signed the lease agreement subject to council's approval. So you have before you the report, sub to your questions, the recommendations before you are before you specifically for approval of a lease agreement, two years, and authorization for execution given to the warden and chief administrative officer.
I take that as good news and successful conclusions, but questions for Steve from members of council?
I was.
Okay, thank you for that, Martin and, and Mennel. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Up next, we have a report on corporate internet development, RFP project to work. Catherine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. In October of 2020, Eldon County Council authorized staff to draft and issue a request for proposal for an Eldon County employee slash council internet and password protected portal. The onset of the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the need for frequent timely communication with employees across the corporation. The purpose of the internet is fourfold. One is to provide a central and secure location to store relevant and frequently accessed corporate documents, policies and procedures that can be accessed from anywhere using a variety of different types of devices. Secondly, it's to act as a primary internal communicative tool, ensuring that staff are feeling supported and have timely and accurate access to emergency updates, corporate updates and wellness resources. Thirdly, it's to provide a vehicle for enhanced and meaningful two-way communication with employees. And finally, the tool will have a password protected portal for council which should help to alleviate the existing server capacity issues when sending agendas. The county recently invited proposals from software web development firms who possess the requisite technical skills to build a new password protected portal and internet site. This was a two-step process, first with a technical evaluation where the evaluation committee evaluated all proposals first and then secondly opened pricing and evaluated that secondly. This was followed by a very detailed software demonstration by the top two proponents. The software development firm that the evaluation committee selected is Sandbox Software Solutions. They were the highest qualified proposal with the best complete quality submission. This firm has successfully completed recent internet sites for the city of Kitchener, Halton Region and St. Joseph's Healthcare Hamilton. The cost of development for the internet site is $57,156.19 with an annual licensing cost of $17,495. The recommendation before council today is to approve the contract award. I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, do we have any questions? I've not seen any. Dominique.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wondering, do we know in the budget, in the long-term planning, the, the service fee, is that in the ballpark, ballpark of what we had planned?
I'm seeing heads nod, yes. Further comments, questions? All right, mover and seconder, please.
I'll move.
I got Jones and Dominique. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, looking forward to that. Next up is our chief administrative officer, emergency team planning.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. This is our monthly update covering March 2021 of our COVID-19 response. Health and safety of our staff remains our top priority, and we recently launched a survey which will help us assess how staff are faring through these challenging times. The emergency management team continues to monitor the situation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Julie? Certainly this COVID seems like it's going sideways on us, but it's a good reminder our safety is so important. If there's no, no further comments, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Ketchba and Mennel. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Council correspondents, we have two items. The first one is a item for consideration. Miss Palau Central Ogden has a letter regarding temporary signals improvements at Carlo Road and Sunset Roads in Belmont. They would like them to become permanent, so it's there for your consideration. Counselor Jones.
I guess I'd like to hear comments from Brian on this.
Go ahead, Brian.
Through you, Mr. Warden, staff are happy to bring back a report with some input and possibly a recommendation if that's the council's desire.
That seems appropriate, everyone happy with that? We need this direction or motion for that. Motion mover and seconder, please. Ketchba and Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have a township of Malahide with a letter regarding Avon Drive and Putnam Road intersection. Comments? Deputy Warden Mennel, go ahead.
Comment, Mr. Warden, a number of the residents approached Malahide about doing something about this quarter. If you're not familiar with it, it's offset at the intersection and it's potentially dangerous. And residents are looking for some sort of safety control, whether it be a four-way stop or a caution light. But because this borders Middlesex, they would be part and parcel of it. So the, the request is for Brian to investigate and talk to Mennel's next county to see if there's options and bring back a report.
Again, is everyone satisfied with that direction? Have Brian bring a report back? I'm seeing a lot of heads. Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, do we have seconder, Shiger? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Items for information, consent, agenda. Do we need to take them individually or all at once, or?
Must there are comments?
Are there comments on any of them? Are you happy to adopt them all at once?
This motion, receive and file.
By Mennel, second by?
Martin.
Martin, thank you. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We're up to other business, first is statements, inquiries by members. I, I have one, I've actually been on the SWIFT board and with the recent announcement here in Elgin, the RFP, and there's a lot of people watching our connectivity meetings, which is a good thing. But I am starting to get a fair number of calls, and one of the ones I really remember is, again, it was news to me, but apparently in the village of Sparda, no, village of Shedd, pardon me, there is fiber on one side of the road. And if you're on the right side of the road, you have, you have connection, the other side you don't. Whether that's true or not, I'm going to bring that up to our connectivity meeting coming up this week for discussion. It, it sort of boggles my mind that if you're on one side of the road, you can get a connection, and on the other side you can't. I don't know, I'm only bringing this out to, to see if anyone is aware of that, or whether there's any truth to it or not. Counselor Jones.
I guess that's news to me, but I, I do know Rogers does have some cable in the area, and I know not everybody's able to get cable, and I know Bell has a small amount of fiber that runs through to Fengal, but it's not, it's really old stuff and not real good quality. So that could be part of the issue, that it may be full or maybe just too, it's obsolete.
Thank you, that, and Counselor Pennington is on our, our committee, and I intend on making him aware of it, make sure you talk to him. It just, again, I don't know if it's true or not, it was just one of those things. We are getting a lot of feedback, so there's still a lot of people with some subpar connections and they're, they're, we're, they are listening to us, so. Further comments, any other items of information, statements? If not, notice of motion. Matters of urgency. It's probably a good thing there aren't any. I think we're at the point of going into closed session. So I'm seeking mover and seconder to go into closed session, please. Purcell and French, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We are back live, entertain a motion to move into open session. By Ketchba, second by. We are back live. Entertain the motion to move into open session. By Ketchba, second by French, um, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Um, we're at point to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
No, um, we'll go through closed session items one by one.
Yes. Please go ahead.
So for closed session, item number one, be it resolved that the report from the CEMC and fire training officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by uh, Jones, second by uh, McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes, thank you.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, next.
Closed session, item number two, uh, service delivery review, road maintenance agreement study, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
No.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight, one, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Our closed session, item number three, which is correspondence, be it resolved that the correspondence be received.
All right, thank you. Mover and second or? Moved by Jones, second by Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Uh, in camera item number four, employment lands update, be it resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Moved by Jones, second by uh, Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Adopt recommendations from committee of the whole, please. Moved by um, French and, uh, Mennel. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Juerger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Consideration of bylaws.
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw twenty-one sixteen, being a bylaw to provide a schedule of services and activities subject to fees and charges by the county of Elgin and to repeal bylaw number twenty-nine as amended.
Moved by uh, Jones and, uh, Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.